Well, we'll call our meeting to order for the Aberdeen City Council for Tuesday, February 19th. Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hansen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we need a motion to approve the minutes of last Monday.
Moved.
Second. Motion, Bunzna, second by Olson. Carl, with one on the phone. We'll need roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Bunzna.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. For open forum, Mr. Van Meter, you've asked to, Randy Van Meter's asked to address the council relating to taxi issues.
Good evening. I was here to talk to you about, they raised the limit on our insurance from $300,000 to $500,000. I've always carried above and beyond what they asked, and it's just really hard to keep a cab company going with the rising prices. I've been in business 14 years, never had any issues with it, and I've just, I'd like to see a little leeway if we could on it, or give it a thought. I've been with National Liability, I've been with them for 14 years, and we've never had an issue with them or anything like that. It's just something I'd like to try and keep the cost down so I don't have to pass it on to our passengers. We have a lot of elderly passengers that just can't afford everything, you know. They can't afford to take right line all the time because they get a couple of days ahead. So I'm just kind of asking you to think about it and see what can be brought up.
Ron, did you indicate you had some information to add to the discussion, or to start the discussion with her?
If the council would, I would just give a little background on how this issue has kind of evolved before the council in the last few years. Prior to the significant changes to the ordinance for the transportation network companies, the taxis and motor buses were the only four higher carriers, and the insurance requirements at that time were established, and were just basically consistent with state law on minimum financial amounts that were required, which are 25 per person, 50 per occurrence for bodily injury, and another $25,000 for property damage. As part of the change that the council discussed and eventually adopted regarding the transportation network companies, this council also increased then the requirements for the taxi cabs, and as an accommodation, the transportation network companies are required by state law to have a minimum of $1 million in liability coverage, and that would be both for personal injury, per person, per occurrence. The council, in looking at the ordinance at that time, and I would also advise the council that-
Ron, could I go back? Is it really $1 million per person? Isn't it just $1 million? Isn't it a, is it a single limit?
$1 million liability insurance, I'm sorry, but that is per person, per occurrence. So yeah, it's a, it's a single limit.
Okay.
For $1 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. As part of the ordinance process for the transportation network companies, I did notify the, both the taxi companies at that time, and Lyft of these potential changes, and that, those changes included the new changes that, well, I shouldn't say the new, but the increase in the insurance for both the taxi cabs, as well as some other requirements for the driver qualifications. And those were able to go through with the council's approval, but the accommodation at that time was to require only $100,000 in property damage and $500,000 in a single limit for bodily injury. So even at that time, it was, it was less than what the, what the transportation network companies were going to be required to carry. So I just wanted to give that background to the, to the council as they, as they consider this and discuss this.
Rob, you had a comment.
You know, yeah, actually, I was curious. What, what limits do you think are reasonable?
I just, I've always carried above and beyond what the city-
Yep, I heard that.
-you know, expected. We are kind of, the insurance company we have now is really tough. We can't hire anybody under 25 years old. We have to have at least five years' driving experience. So it's not like we're hiring people off the street. I have no problem with $300,000 or whatever it was, but we're one of the few towns in Aberdeen, in South Dakota, that have a cab company. They have, in fact, two. Like in Sioux Falls, two of them didn't even renew because of Uber. A lot of our senior citizens rely on, I've got customers that have been with me for 30 years. I've been driving cabs since back in the 70s, that shows how old I am. And I just, you know, I want to be fair, but we're, I think we're well-covered.
Again, I'm not sure what, if you answered my question. What, are you suggesting a $300,000 policy?
I would like to stick it to $300,000, or work somewhere. I, it's really tough to find somebody to insure cabs. I mean, it's just, we're trying to get an endorsement right now to up our insurance, but we're just having a heck of a time getting it, because they, nobody insures cabs anymore, because we're more of a, we're a relic, really, is what we are. And we're considered high risk, and I just don't consider my drivers, like I said, my drivers have been with me 14 years. I consider them professional. We've never had any major accidents, and God forbid, I hope it never happens, but I'm just trying to keep the company afloat and not pass it on to the senior citizens.
Other questions, Dave?
So you're not at the $500,000 limit right now?
Right now, I'm at the $300,000.
Okay. So you don't know what the additional cost will be for going from 300 to 500,000?
I don't. I've been working with Western Agency, and the insurance company's been putting us off, because they don't, they won't rewrite the policy. They'll write an endorsement, and they've been kind of backlogging for the past two weeks on it.
So how many vehicles do you have?
We have five.
Five. So if that costs you $500 more a year, is that a significant amount?
It's, it is, Rob, because right now, my, my cab insurance is about $12,000 a year.
Okay.
You know, and I, if I do it, I'd have to pass it on to the, to the senior citizens. A lot of them are on a, you know, on a-
Fixed income.
Yeah. And I've got some really, I guess, I've been driving cabs, I started driving cabs in college in the 70s, and I enjoy it. And Aberdeen's been good. They always said Aberdeen couldn't support one cab company, but we had three there for a while.
Have you had any accidents in the last five years?
We had two that weren't our fault, and we re-rended them.
Any serious bodily injury?
Any questions or comments from the council?
So right now, you'd be happy with a 300, and then 300 for the, or you'd be happy if both were 300,000 instead of just 300 and then 500?
Yeah.
So I think he says he's had the 300 single limit.
Yeah. And I, like I said, I've always carried above and beyond, you know, what was the, because of the, Western Agency's always walked out to me. And I could go to, you know, I could get online and go into the 500,000, but I'd be dealing with somebody that's not even in town. And like I said, we have the accidents we have had, and, but we got re-rended, it wasn't our fault. So I just, I can be for you, you know, give my input on it anyway.
Any other comments? We typically don't make judgments or decisions when we, when we have people come for us in open forums, so we'll take this under consideration and take input as we go forward and see if it merits a proposal.
Okay, that's all I can ask.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda for open forum, Casey Weisman is asked to talk to us again. Casey, how's your weekend with the Shriners?
Those guys are a fun bunch, I'm not gonna lie. Thank you for coming and giving your welcome. We even snapped a photo of Mayor Leeson giving his welcome to the Shriners, and you did a good job. I had to follow you up Saturday with my welcome, and mine didn't compare, so.
They were a fun, fun group, easy audience.
Yep, and they'll be back again January 30, July, sorry, July 31st through August 3rd. There'll be 2,500 of them coming to Aberdeen, so. We had 200 last weekend, multiply that. It'll be a fun time, so. But thank you for allowing us to come and present, giving you our fourth quarter recap of our marketing, social media convention promotions through the city of Aberdeen. Not only are we gonna try to recap on the fourth quarter, but I have some numbers in here for kind of our end of the year totals as well, so. Without going over what, who we are and what we do, Dave's shaking his head, yes, thank you. Just to dive right in, some of the things, I'll let Laura kick it off with our, our marketing efforts for our fourth quarter, so.
Hello, thank you for having us. It seems like we were just here. This is crazy. Time goes so fast. So of course, fourth quarter of every year, the big deal is Rooster Rush in Aberdeen, and this year was no different. We definitely made an impact, which hopefully you saw. Last month, we were able to bring home another bird to add to our flock from the tourism conference, so we were able to bring home the 2018 Cacklin Community Award, so we've won that award five out of the last 10 years. Go Aberdeen! So we're pretty proud of that. So the Rooster Rush activities involved airport welcomes, hotel welcomes. We again took over a Wings hockey game, and I don't know if any of you were there, but no one told us that the rubber fish would freeze to the ice at the hockey game, so that was pretty hilarious.
That was a fail.
It was a fail, but it was fun to watch. So then, on November 8th, we held our second annual pheasant sandwich shootout, and that was in conjunction with the Chambers Business after Hours, and it was very well attended. We actually were super happy. We had a lot of kids from Aberdeen Central and Aberdeen Roncoli that signed up to participate in that contest this year, so that was, that was amazing. We're so happy, really hoping that we can increase that next year again. So that, like I said, that was a great success. We had representatives from the Department of Tourism here to actually judge that contest for us, and may have bribed them with a little bit of pheasant sandwiches for that award, I don't know, but we'll take it nonetheless. T-shirt orders. Every year, we do t-shirts. We have t-shirts printed up, and we sell them to businesses in the community so that they can help us spread the word about Rooster Rush, and this year, we actually sold over 1,800 t-shirts. And so hopefully, you saw those kind of circulating throughout the community. We were very proud of that. That's something that we do just as a service to the community. We sell them at cost. We don't make a dime off of that or anything. We just do it, do it to get the awareness out there. And of course, we had our radio ads. Just some other promotions that we did for hunting specifically, we advertised in the Minnesota Vikings yearbook. We advertised in the Pheasants Forever 2018 Fall Issue and the Super Issue. That's kind of our biggest, biggest draw is from Pheasants Forever. Midwest Hunting and Fishing, Iowa Sportsman, South Dakota Magazine, and we actually advertised, we tried something new this year. We were in the Horizons Travel Magazine, which inserts into the Wall Street Journal. And so that was something just kind of new, just kind of out there. We thought, why not? Let's give it a try. So we paid for that ad, and as part of that, we actually received some time on the ABC billboard at Times Square. So we were able to send an image and our website and everything out there, so, you know, who knows if we get anything out of it. Hopefully, people saw it and said, hey, what's that? And went and researched a little further. So that was just some added value we got with that ad. And then, vacation promotion, not a lot going on during quarter four, just kind of winding down for the year on that and gearing up for the next year. We did complete our 2019 Community Guide, so that is now printed and circulating. We were able to take a delegation of Chinese visitors through Northern out to the Hutterite Colony, so that was very interesting. I got to go take them out there. Collected a lot of photos from Storybook Land visitors. We decided we've got those emails, let's use them, let's see what they can give us. Got a ton of great photos back from people, so we were really excited about that. And then, two things that we did during quarter four to prepare for 2019. Of course, we always host State Bees, and that's a big deal. And so this year, we decided to kind of kick that up a notch, and we had such great success with our Rooster Rush t-shirts, that we decided, let's see what happens if we branch out a little bit and do that with State Bees. So what we did is, Layton actually designed the new design, which is Aberdeen is the place to be, and so we had that printed on t-shirts. Again, solicited businesses here in town to purchase those for their employees. So you will see about 520 of these bright green obnoxious t-shirts floating through town, and also, all the workers at the Barnett Center, all the volunteers, all of Jeans people, they're all gonna be wearing them during the tournament. And then, all of the players, coaches, ball boys, all those guys are gonna get these cinch bags. So we're hoping that we see those circulating throughout Aberdeen that weekend, and then carry out through track season and hopefully into the summer. So just some new things that we're gonna try. We're gonna see what happens. Hopefully, you'll be seeing a lot of green during that March tournament. Any questions?
Great job.
How this translates over the marketing efforts, just to give you kind of a recap. For October, November, December 2018 versus 2017, we saw website traffic increase, the number of visits increased 37% on our, on our website, and then page views increased almost 20%. So the marketing efforts, the social media efforts, and everything accumulated into increased traffic, people wanting to gather that information, whether it's visitation for, for family events, or for hunting, or whatever it might be, but we did see an increase from 2017 to 2018. So I'll let Layton cover the social media here.
Good evening. Just to add to something with the State Bee, we reached out to the South Dakota High School Activities Association, and, and working with Jean Burnell, we're gonna change all the table skirting along the floor to have some of that branding, Aberdeen is the place to be, and the Aberdeen slogan. So as you watch the game, that camera's gonna be following that, so we'll get quite a few impressions off of that.
So what was the reaction of the High School Association to that request? Pretty cooperative?
We reached out to them, kind of gave them an idea of what we wanted to put together. They kind of thought, why hasn't somebody thought of this sooner?
Good.
And they were very receptive. We are using their logo as well, so we'll have Aberdeen is the place to be, Aberdeen, South Dakota, High School Activities, Aberdeen is the place to be. So it'll be a rotation, not a rotation, but there'll be 11 different table skirts for the, for the timekeepers and the officials, so every fan, all sets of eyes, nobody, it'd be hard to miss, so we're excited for it.
All righty, with that, summation of the fourth quarter for social media, basically that's the year end, so I might go back and forth a little bit, but fourth quarter actually did a little better than I thought. Obviously, a lot of our main items that we can promote are shut down for the winter months, but we did continue to promote our 2019 vacation up until December 31st, and that did do well for us. In fact, we had over 3,000 entries, and what we did is, we promoted that from our Facebook page, Twitter feed, and Instagram feeds, and took them to our webpage, and let automation work for us, and it acquired and tallied it for us. And we had over 3,000 entries, and in 2019, a family from Valley City, North Dakota will be coming to spend a little time with us, so. Some other posts that did well for us during the fourth quarter is an event that's been held here in Aberdeen for the last three years, and will be here another two years, is the Nutcracker that's held at Northern, and we do some ticket giveaways for that, and that had a reach of over 32,000 people for a one-show event. So that did real well. Again, the vacation package did well for us. So in summation, I'm not gonna really touch on fourth quarter, I'm gonna talk about year end. Year end, we saw Facebook with a total of 13,000, a little over 13,800 page likes. That's an increase of 2,350. All the key indicators for all our social media saw an increase for the year of anywhere from 16 to 21%. So we're, we're real happy there. Total reach on our Facebook was 2.9 million, in actuality, 2,990,410, if you want to be specific, so. Again, 20% of the followers for our Facebook page are from Aberdeen. 50% are from South Dakota, and 10% from North Dakota, and 6% from Minnesota. So what we're trying to do, again, as I've mentioned several times, is create a base that when we do our posts, you know, we prompt them to share. And it's a little game, you know, the more they share, the more, you know, it doubles back. So with all that said, what we're gonna do again in 2018 is basically what we've been doing thus far, creating promotional packets, giveaways that entice people to enter, and right now, we have one that's going real well for us. Through our marketing efforts, sometime we earn points, and we can get tickets to events. Well, we can't use them, so we turn around, give them away. We have obtained some Garth Brook tickets. That's for an event in Minneapolis, but we're marketing those into Wisconsin and Illinois.
Iowa.
In Iowa. And in fact, it was funny, when Laura and I were boosting it, going through the procedure to boost it, it had already posted, and the indicator on our email was already dinging, and we weren't even done with the process yet, so it has performed quite well in just, what, a little over a week.
Almost 1,000 in less than a week.
So, again, so using promotions with events, businesses, hotels here in town, is how we're gonna try to keep garnering interest on our site. Just a little info, before I came here today, I went and I crunched the numbers on all our, our fellow CVBs, and as far as Facebook is concerned, obviously Rapid City leads everybody by far, Sioux Falls is second, Fargo's third, Aberdeen's fourth, as far as people that like and follow the page, and we have a pretty healthy lead over Watertown. So, and again, considering two and a half years ago, we only had 8,600 likes. That's where Watertown is right now, so we took a pretty good jump. Casey also wanted me to touch base on some of the leads we've worked on in 2018, that either were held in 2018, or going to be held this year, or even farther out. We helped several groups, Laura and I, with room blocks where they reach out to us. We contact the hotels on their behalf and secure rooms for them, but Dakota Cup Soccer, Midco Soccer, Midco Cup Soccer, the Midwest Youth Wrestling Duels are some of the bigger room blocks we've done. We've also helped some of the groups that come in with event planning, you know, where can they take people to eat, what are things to see after, or during breaks during our meetings. We've also helped a couple organizations market their, their event with some guidance on how they can, what they could do with social media, or when we promote their event, you know, we tag them and try to show them some love. So as Casey mentioned, he got to spend some time with the Shriners. Well, the Knights of Columbus and the VFW are coming yet this year, or next year, excuse me. So we like it when we get those larger service groups. 2021 also bring the East-West College Basketball Event to the Barnett Center. Currently, that's being held down at the, in Sioux Falls. We'll make one trip west, and then it'll come back to us, so that'll be a nice event for Aberdeen. So with that, that's kind of a quick summation. Any questions?
Questions, anybody? Casey, what's a-
Yes, sir.
What does the weather affect on the pheasants at this point of the year?
I was going to a board meeting up at Fort Sistin on Friday, and there's one less. I hit it with my truck, and no, there's, I've been seeing birds everywhere. So, I mean, they're weathering the storm, shelter belts, cattail slews are full of birds. I think the moisture is something we desperately needed, maybe just not all at once, like we're getting. But no, I have been seeing quite a few out there, so. Yep. We got a little bit of time yet to go over, okay, I'll make it short. Just to recap the fourth quarter on a lot of our SIC codes and occupancy tax, the fun stuff. Looking at October, November, December, everything was up. October took a dip in lodging. Other than that, eating and drinking were up. So to the point where we're looking at lodging, there was a 4.23% increase over last year. Eating, a 7.67% increase over last year, and drinking was 3.72% over last year. So all of that combined, 2018 total versus 2017 last year, there was a 6.45% increase in, in SIC codes. Those are some of the numbers that we track, that we track, along with the occupancy tax numbers, and where are my occupancy tax numbers? Here they are. Looking at those, again, October, November, December, fourth quarter, October was a strong month with a 2% increase over last year. November dipped a little bit. We kind of looked at our calendar of events and tried to sumass why that might be. That could be weather-related as well. But November took a 19% dip over last year. There was a $6,000 difference. Do the math, divide that by two. That equates to about 105 rooms for the month of November. So had we sold 105 rooms in the month of November, we'd have been par. So we were actually below that in November. December, again, we track differently. It's just, our calendar year actually starts in December, because we're reporting, Carl's shaking his head, because we're a month behind. So actually, December tracked 15% higher than last year, so that was good. What does that equate to? Almost a 2% increase over last year. So those are heads in beds, those are visitors that are coming to Aberdeen. Even with the loss of Super Right North and the loss of the Ramada, we're still trying, we're still pushing as hard as we can to bring those visitors to Aberdeen and, and focus on that overnight stay, so. Any questions that you guys might have that we could try to answer?
Do you have any way to measure Airbnb stays?
We will shortly, I believe. South Dakota Tourism came out with this new website called the Dashboard, where they're tracking a lot of the occupancy percentages. You can break it down by state, by county, and by city, but I believe it shows the difference in there to the reporting of the Airbnbs. It's not set in stone yet. 2018 was kind of a trial year for them. They were working the bugs out of it, but I believe shortly, we'll be able to track the Airbnbs. And, and believe it or not, they take a toll. If you think they don't, you're mistaken. We may not see it as heavily in Aberdeen here, but communities like Sioux Falls and Rapid, think of the rally. When somebody can rent out their whole house, that's not somebody paying, you know, triple B money. That's not somebody staying in a hotel. That's not somebody paying an occupancy tax. So a lot of that has gone unreported, and, and they're trying to hold their hand to the fire now, so, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have questions of any of them?
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for allowing us to come and present, so.
Thanks for your passion.
They let the cat out of the bag on the, the Aberdeen is the place to be. That was supposed to be next quarter, but we were too excited, we were too excited to keep it to ourselves, so, thank you.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda, items A, B, and C in our consent counter.
Moved.
Second. Motion, Bunzna, second by Olson. Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunzna.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Under new business tonight, two ordinances presented for possible first reading. The first relates to administrative appeals. Ron?
This is another exciting ordinance from your city attorney. This is something that I had been working on for several years, and it was a matter of really kind of refining what we anticipated the costs could be for, for instituting an admini- This is something that I had, um, been working on for several years, and it was a matter of, of really kind of refining what we anticipated the costs could be for, for instituting an administrative appeals, uh, procedure, but the setup begins with the fact that as a home-rule, uh, city, we are required, uh, by, by our state constitution to have a procedure that allows for, for judicial review, and that's the language, uh, both in the, in the constitution and adopted by the South Dakota Supreme Court, that requires that if, if there is a decision, um, of a city official, uh, a resident needs to have an opportunity to substantively and fairly appeal that. Uh, the vast majority of decisions, uh, handed down by various officials are already, uh, subject to appeal, whether it's a code enforcement officer's decision, uh, which can go in front of the zoning board, or even, for example, our animal control officer's decision, uh, regarding an animal can go in front of the animal review board, but we do have a, a very small, uh, number of potential decisions that, that can be reached by the city where the citizen doesn't necessarily have within, uh, the city proper inability to appeal that. And we are required, as a home-rule city, to have such a procedure set up. That procedure satisfies what is called procedural due process, which allows for adequate notice of the issue and of the, of the decision to the resident, and a, an ability to have that appeal heard by a fair and impartial tribunal. What, what the administrative appeals procedure sets up here is that that, uh, fair and impartial hearer will be a hearing examiner. And a hearing examiner, as set forth, uh, in the, in the proposed ordinance, would be a, uh, a retired judge or an attorney in good standing, but someone who is familiar with, with rules of evidence and with, uh, rules of procedure, and can help steer, manage, and ultimately bring an appeal to, to a fair decision. Uh, what you, what I am proposing is ordinance 190202, which establishes a, a very comprehensive appeals process, and, uh, I've, I've mentioned the, the hearing examiner aspect of it. Uh, what is important too is the, the fact that once an appeal is filed by a person and that would stay, uh, under normal, normal circumstances, will stay any kind of formal action on the decision until the appeal has been resolved. Um, the, uh, the procedure has been, again, and I'm, I, I almost apologize to the council, uh, but we look at what, what is available in this, in the state. Uh, South Dakota, other home-rule cities include Sioux Falls, and Sioux Falls has a, a very specific administrative appeals procedure. Uh, if you were to compare this procedure that's proposed under the ordinance and theirs, you'd see a lot of similarities. However, um, I think after the bill, the fact that it's taken two or three years that I've been working on this, um, I, I feel that we've come up with actually a, a superior product, frankly, in the ordinance that we have here, uh, that allows us to satisfy the concerns of a court, uh, the requirements of our constitution, and also, uh, the ready needs of our, of our residents to, uh, to have, uh, an opportunity to come before a fair, uh, tribunal and have their, their appeals heard. And I would recommend and ask that the, that the council, uh, approve for first reading the administrative appeals ordinance.
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, motion Remley, second by Ronain, questions or comments, anyone? Yes, I would say we would always encourage people to come talk to us directly first before they file an appeal, we're always open to that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sometimes that doesn't satisfy them, so. Uh, Carl, we have a motion and a second for first reading for an administrative appeals process ordinance, roll call please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. And our second ordinance, uh, presented for possible first reading is a, uh, establishing a charter revision commission, Ron.
Thank you, again. Uh, could you flip me over to my screen so I can be on? All right. What I wanted to begin with is the discussion of the proposed ordinance at, uh, 190203 would establish a charter revision commission, and to lay the background for this, the council in a conversation last year, um, asked that we look at and consider a charter commission, and, uh, what I have put together in the proposal is, is a charter revision commission. Currently, under our existing charter, there, there are four ways, uh, to amend the charter. Relevant to this discussion are, are these. Um, are we on here?
You're not.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to it from my screen.
Okay.
Tell me when to...
No, you can stop, that's fine. Um, but the charter can be amended by an ordinance adopted by this council or by a report of a charter commission, and lastly, uh, by the voters of the city, but in any event, whether it's an ordinance of this council or a report of a charter commission, they all go before the, uh, voters for, for approval by a majority vote. And so, this council, if it chose to, could adopt ordinances, uh, amending the charter, those ordinances would then go to the, to the people for a vote. Um, what we see too is the ability of a, of a separate board to be created, called a charter revision commission, that, uh, can independently review the charter and propose to, uh, the electorate by a report to this body, uh, a report of the charter commission that might, uh, include some ballot questions. And what you have before you as, uh, uh, possible, possible first reading is 190203, which sets up a charter revision commission that would be comprised of nine people, and for your information, Watertown has a charter revision commission, and they have 21 people on their commission. Um, Sioux Falls has a charter revision commission and has five people on their commission, so, uh, again, however that number is set, uh, for purposes of this, uh, particular, uh, proposal, we, we were looking at a nine-member commission with each one of the council members having the ability to appoint one member. Uh, significantly then, the charter would not be a standing charter commission, but would be one that convenes every four years. And the reason I, I chose four was to, was to match it up with the general election. Uh, also, the timing of the reporting process would, would put it on the November ballot if there was a recommended, a ballot question. And, uh, so, we, whether, whether the council, uh, wanted, wanted to change that, again, those are, those are things that can be done. The, again, the, the, uh, Watertown Charter Commission is a standing committee, uh, they appear to meet every, every year. The, I'm sorry, the Sioux Falls Commission is a standing committee, the Watertown Commission is a five-year commission, and they convene once every five years. Um, but the work of the charter commission would be a public process through an open meeting, uh, procedure. Uh, public input would be sought on any potential changes that might be desired, um, any recommendations that would be made, and then ultimately, that would come to this council, uh, first as a preliminary report, and then as a final report from the charter commission that might propose ballot questions. But the, 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 again, the, the task, the charge to me was to look at a charter commission. Um, as we look at this process, uh, we know that the charter, while it's, while it is essentially our constitution, is one that could be periodically studied and reviewed and potentially updated, whether it's by this council or whether it's by a charter commission, but, uh, I have put together, uh, ordinance 190203, uh, with the, with the structure for a charter commission.
Hey, why don't we, uh, get a, a motion for first reading, uh, with, to facilitate discussion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion, Ronain, second by Rux, questions or comments? David, you had indicated to me you had some questions.
Uh, well, I really don't have any questions, I'm, I'm just not in support of this, um, adding another layer. I think this, um, this body is capable of handling this, uh, either by the nine members or a subcommittee, and, um, my proposal would be is that we wouldn't pass this, we would come back with, um, I'm, I'm not sure an ordinance fits, but, uh, some procedures to lay out that every four years, we would, um, we would, this subcommittee or this group would specifically meet on these questions. And so, that, um, I'm, I'm just not in support of creating another body to, um, when, when I believe we're very capable of handling these things.
Questions from the council? Uh, Jennifer, you have a comment?
Yeah. Um, you know, following up with what Dave said, or I, I'm gonna make the motion that we table this, that we create a subcommittee of the council now, and we look at this proposal, um, as a subcommittee, you know, four people is what it was supposed to be, and come back with a revised ordinance, and this, um...
Let me see if we can get a second for that, for the, the motion is to...
Okay.
Is to, uh...
What is it?
Table. Table it.
Table it, uh, Jennifer, it was kind of, kind of hard to hear you, so if, if I can, paraphrase you, uh, table it to, uh, uh, look at, uh, a subcommittee to bring back a report to the council for, uh, consideration? Is, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is there a second to that motion to table this and appoint a subcommittee?
Okay, that's the second part of the motion, okay. Uh, second.
Second by, uh, Roni. Uh, go ahead then, Jennifer, more of, uh, how you'd, you'd like this to work.
Well, and, you know, listening to what Dave is saying and he is asking, I think for, for a major change, 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 um, to what is proposed here, and I have some, you know, minor changes and, 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 and a couple of other ideas in my head that I don't know I necessarily discussed again, but I just think that, you know, based on a bit of conversation that I've had, that there are some, there are some real strong opinions and ideas about how this candy change can be done in a different manner, and so I, I think a subcommittee of the council should sit down and, you know, ask it and come back with, uh, with something that the council is more involved with and regards to the ordinance, and, uh, and to run, um, I hope that Ron wouldn't be offended by this, I think if he would support...
Just turn him red.
... definitely.
Okay, yeah, questions or comments for or against the, uh, action to table?
Well, the comments would be germane on the entire motion, would they not?
Right.
Okay. Um, I'm uncertain what the purpose is of the, of this, um, subcommittee. Is it to suggest the amendments to the charter for consideration by the entire council? Or is it to consider a procedure by which somebody brings forth proposed amendments?
I think it's the latter.
It's your motion, Jennifer, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so from my perspective, it would be to adjust the procedure, to come back and give a revise for him.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe that would, uh, include, I, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that, but it would include, um, you know, there's been some, I think, some misunderstanding of what this charter revision commission report means. Some people are understanding that this council has some override, uh, on that, that recommendation or report, and that is not the case, so I think that has to be very clear.
Clint? Um, I guess I don't have, because we still have time, you know, um, setting up a, but I would like to see if we do set up a subcommittee, uh, of this, that we do give them a time limit to formulate how we want to go forward and do this, because if we are going to bring forth amendments, you know, I mean, we could sit there and say, we have all the time in the world, but 2020 is not looking that far in the window. Um, and if, in the end, the charter commission is the way we go, we would need time to set that up as well. I'm not opposed to us looking at it, uh, to see what we could do. I'm also not opposed to us at any point, um, having a commission that would help us out in this respect, but there are a lot of questions to still be answered, but, you know.
Jennifer, would you see this as, as this group bringing back a recommendation or bringing back a, perhaps a list of options?
Um, I would see it as a recommendation, and I will also say that the council is not comfortable with setting this to a subcommittee, that I would, um, that I would request that we go, go to work session or a couple of work sessions where we have this out in greater detail, again, based on the fact that, uh, that I think that there are some larger proposals out there as far as amendments to it, and I feel, from my perspective, that, um, bringing in kind of a regular medium might not give us enough, uh, you know, enough out of this community have to session about it, so, so either, either a subcommittee and a, uh, people have to look at it, and, and, I would request that we do a work session, at least one work session where we take a lot of time and focus just on this item.
Okay, well, we'll need to deal with one decision at a time, so is there any more comments on whether or not we want to table this and establish a subcommittee? If not, Carl, roll call for that, a yes vote would, uh, table this.
Councilmember Remley.
Uh, you know...
Um, Ronain.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next issue, who's on the subcommittee? Jennifer, uh, you are on the subcommittee, Dave has volunteered, and, uh, Rob has, is three enough?
Yes.
So be it, then, if there's no objection? Okay.
I'm really angry, everybody.
When, when are they gonna report back?
Could, could we have, could we have Ron on the committee?
And I would assume Ron would, would be a resource for that committee ongoing, uh...
Too, too much attorney, uh, weight on that.
But you gotta even out. So, let's say I, first you do the wound and then you throw a little salt in it, is that how that works?
Uh, obviously, there's no hurry, because what was proposed wasn't going to happen till 2020, so, uh, should we put it, a report date on this, or?
I, I would like to see a report date, whether it's...
Give me a, give me a, give me a day.
Is, I, I don't know, I guess I was on the committee.
A month, two months?
I think...
April 1.
April 1? Works for me.
Any objection to that?
Or the first meeting, uh, around, after April 1st.
April fool's day.
Yeah.
Report back by, by April 1, then. All right. Brett, you've been waiting patiently for, uh, your item here. Item C, uh, designated Lynn as the signatory for a, uh, agreement with the department.
Correct. My line item, uh, involves a recurring, uh, uh, agency agreement between SD DOT Aeronautics and the City of Aberdeen, uh, regarding AIP projects. Uh, AIP projects, um, are funded upfront by the city and then reimbursed as the project, uh, progresses. So, what I'm asking is that, uh, city manager Lynn be designated as the authorized signatory?
Moved.
Second.
Motion Bunzness, uh, and, uh, second by Olson, any questions on this? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Rich. Uh, item D, entertain a motion to, uh, pay the bills, uh, that you have on your list for the, for this week.
Moved.
Motion Olson, second by, uh, Bunzness. Questions on any bills? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. And item E is payroll February 3 to 16, and city share of social security, old age, and survivors, insurance, retirement, health, and life.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Rux, second by Lunsman, Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Lynn?
Okay, uh, thank you. I provided within my report an update of service line warranties of America enrollments. Uh, as of 2018, 11% of the city's water line customer base was enrolled with super line
Pretty good.
I noticed, uh-
Also with that report, you had a report of the claims that had been filed, was there any particular reason why in the one year we had a spike in claims?
Uh, no, it was just, uh, just, uh, that was, uh, two thousand seventeen.
We show all the other years, uh, for example, the sewer lines between eighteen and thirty, and then a hundred and six in two thousand seventeen, and the water lines between six and thirteen, and then in two thousand seventeen, fifty-six, do we have any reason why?
Well, the, the reason would be is if you looked at the waterline enrollments, you'll see between two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, our customer base doubled. I shouldn't say our customer base, sewer lines-
Maybe they just did a better sales job with their, uh-
And with the, the sales job, they ended up, uh, picking up some, uh, claims.
Okay, all right.
Perfect timing, yeah, for some of those people.
Yep. Anything else, Lynn?
No, thank you.
Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Bunzness, second by Roni, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Where's your?